Correct. She's the Northeast PA Regional Leader. Is that correct, the title? Just take a moment and read the proclamation. Whereas the citizens of Luzerne County value their health and that of their families and support programs that raise awareness of public health issues such as Lyme disease. Whereas Lyme disease is a bacterial infection, most often contracted from a tick bite, and remains an urgent public health concern in Pennsylvania. Whereas statistics show Pennsylvania leads the nation with over 12,000 confirmed cases in 2016. Whereas children ages five to 14 have been identified as the most at-risk group in which Lyme disease can have a profound impact on a child's life. Whereas Luzerne County, with the rural and suburban areas, has nearly 800 confirmed cases with unconfirmed cases estimated to be significantly higher. Whereas Northeast PA Lyme Support Group along with the Pennsylvania Lyme Resource Network remain dedicated to promoting awareness, advocacy, support, and prevention of Lyme disease and other tick-borne illnesses. Therefore, we, the Luzerne County Council, do hereby express our gratitude to the Northeast PA Lyme Disease Support Group and the PA Lyme Resource Network for their dedication, providing advocacy, awareness, and prevention education to the citizens of Luzerne County, and do hereby proclaim the month of May 2018 as Lyme Disease Awareness Month in Luzerne County. Do you want to come up and accept the proclamation? I think Ms. Castor would like to have a few moments. You want to go to the audience, please?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you so much to the council. I just want to make mention that it was in 2014 that Act 83 legislation was passed in our state which identified Lyme disease as a serious health threat to the residents, particularly children ages five to 15, as you mentioned in the proclamation. Along with that legislation came recommendations made to the Department of Health and to legislators to pass some education along to the public, some prevention education and awareness. And I'm happy to say that in 2017, we did receive a CDC Health Block grant, Pennsylvania Lyme Resource Network did, through the Department of Health. And we now offer the only state-funded prevention program throughout our state on tick-borne disease. So I became certified in that program last year. I'm now the Director of Education and Outreach with Pennsylvania Lyme Resource Network. The program's called Dare to be Tick Aware, and it is a free public education program for any at-risk group, which can include any outdoor workers, certainly children, schools, clubs, groups, or organizations that are nonprofit. And it's certainly available for businesses for a small fee who are looking to provide health awareness and safety to their employees. So I urge everyone on the council, everyone here in attendance, to go to the P A Lime.org website, click on the Dare to be Tick Aware link, and learn more information about the program that's available. Thank you.
And thank you for your work. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to additions or deletions. Do we have any additions or deletions to the voting agenda? Harry Nun, do we have a motion to adopt the voting agenda? Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Second? Miss Segman? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? An unheard motion carries. Public comment on the agenda items. Mr. Scheiner.
Good evening. On your agenda this evening is a resolution to have a contract with UGI to realize utility cost savings. It was in the paper the other day that UGI is expected to drop their rates by 2.8% on December 1st. Do you really think now is the time to enter into a contract? Or would it be worthwhile to wait until then and consider it? I don't know the answer, but I think it's worthwhile looking into. An almost 3% drop in rates being predicted now, it could be more, it could be less, but it might be worthwhile to hold off. On the ordinance for the Blighted Property Review Committee, I think it's a great organization. I think it's a great committee. I think it's needed. But I think the language in the ordinance, if you're going to pass that, has to be changed from "may contribute the money" to "shall contribute." Regardless of any side agreement you have, the ordinance has to be exacting. And putting "may" in there allows the Redevelopment Authority to not give you anything towards the administrative and legal, regardless of what your side agreement is. Also, it was in the paper that the cities feel they want to be part of this, and that that is a possibility under the law. So that needs consideration, and what their redevelopment authorities would have to contribute for administrative and legal. So the whole thing has gotten bigger. And I think before you really make too many moves forward on this, you need to consider that, maybe discuss it more at a work session as to what needs to be done and what the cities can contribute if everything's going to work together through this county agency. Thank you.
Mr. Griffith?
The agenda item I have to speak about is the same one I spoke at at the public hearing, item number seven. But before I speak about that, we did have a public hearing, and it was not recorded. Our charter mandates that public hearings are in are some way documented, and they're not documented. I brought it up the last time I was here. So I wish at some point we would get public hearings recorded and approved by this council when we have a public hearing, so my comments are on the record. Now, get on to my public comment, number seven. I'd like to know where the crystal ball is that this county has, that they can say in the agreement that they're going to talk about at the work session, that there's a $15,000 fee in the agreement that the council will get reimbursed, or the county will get reimbursed by the Redevelopment Authority. I don't think there's anybody who has a crystal ball when it comes to legal fees, especially legal fees, or administrative. So what happens when the $15,000 is met? Do we just stop the Blighted Property Committee in its tracks and say, oh, well, guess what? We reached our goal. So even if you're in the middle of litigation, eh, too bad. We'll wait till next year. Hopefully, we'll get the money to continue this. It's going to stop the process of the Blighted Property Committee. Ms. Lindy said there was no problem. Redevelopment Authority said they have no problem paying for this. So why can't we fix the language in the ordinance that says they shall reimburse the county for any legal and administrative fees per the agreement? You don't have to put a dollar figure in, just say "per the agreement." If that's, in fact, what the issue is, is that we're going to have to have a separate agreement each year with the Redevelopment Authority. They don't know how many properties are going to come before that Blighted Property Committee. How are you going to set a number for that? And what happens when they reach the number? This ordinance is flawed. The Property Committee, the Blighted Property Committee, needs to have the ability to move forward when they start on a property that's blighted in this county. And you're going to put the brakes to the whole thing by saying, oh, $15,000 for 2018? Great. What are you going to do when the property's more than that? What's the answer to that question? But I think the Redevelopment Authority has an obligation to take care of the cost, and according to their members, they have no problem paying for it. So straight strengthen the language in the ordinance that says they'll pay for it. It's real simple. And that way, there's no ambiguity. The county taxpayers are not on the hook for any money at any point along the way where this thing gets stopped, and all of a sudden, now we're over $15,000. And the Redevelopment Authority says, we're not giving you any more because we agreed to $15,000. And the county says, well, maybe we're going to have to amend the budget. We're going to have to transfer money from our reserve. Because, listen, that reserve is the golden rainbow. Mr. Pedri has a golden rainbow, and he's just going to take every dime he can get out of that before the auditors hit it. I'd get rid of that money real quick, or lock it down. Thank you.
Those are the only two that have indicated an interest. Are there other people who are present who would like to speak in regard to agenda items?
Sorry, sir. We were in the working session, but you didn't hand this in ahead of time?
That's okay. You want to speak about agenda items? Items on the voting session agenda?
No, it's for the working session.
Okay.
Yes, the work session, yes.
Work session? Okay. Anyone else? Okay, moving on. Old business, we had a question about business interruption insurance. Mr. Craig, would you like to talk about that?
Yes. We, Mr. O'La, had raised the question during public comment at the last meeting, whether or not the county had business interruption insurance. And we looked into it, and yes, the county does have it, but it kicks in after an interruption of 72 hours. So after 72 hours, we could submit a claim to get coverage for a shorter interruption period would obviously cost more money.
Okay. Any questions from council on that? Thank you. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 8th meeting. Miss Segman, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wakus? Under question? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
No.
Mr. Urban? Any abstentions? Unheard? Motion carries. Moving over to number two. Number two is introduction to the ordinance adopted in 2019, long-range operational fiscal and capital plan for Luzerne County. Manager Pedri is going to introduce that. Since it is an ordinance regarding operation plan and budget, it's not necessary to have first voting on that. Mr. Pedri, do you want to?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Council before you is a long-term capital budget for the years 2019 to 2021, as required by the charter. County management must provide this to you prior to June 1st. We're happy to do this earlier and at tonight's council meeting. You will see that our capital fund, which is based off of a bond that the commissioners took out, is dwindling throughout our process here. There are three projects that county management is suggesting that county council reviews in terms of this budget for 2019. Number one, the first project would be the courthouse interior restoration, Phase Two. This would be the project in order to complete the first floor of the interior restoration project. When John Cannon Company came in here to discuss this matter, he discussed this with county council. This would be the next step of the restoration project of the courthouse. We're estimating this to be $650,000. The second project would be a countywide parking lot rehabilitation, $400,000 for this. This project would include the resurfacing, repair, cracked ceiling, pavement sealant, and line markings for county-owned parking lots, Penn Place Courthouse Annex, engineering and warehouse, West Side Annex, the Hanover Township Annex, EMA, and the Domestic Relations Office Building. That would be a $400,000 estimated cost. The third project is the Human Services Parking Lot Restoration. This is a project for the restoration of the rear lots of the Human Services Building located at 111 Pennsylvania Avenue, where county council will be discussing this building later on tonight for your resolution. We're estimating that cost to be $150,000. The final project is the Standard Emergency Building Fund of $100,000. When those four projects are completed, if council will approve those, the balance of the fund will be $664,000, $246 after those three projects are completed. So county council has a decision to make with regard to this plan. This is the plan that's submitted by management. It's up to council, up to this point, as to what they would like to see. You have until September 1st to make any and all amendments that council would like. You can add projects, delete projects, move budgets around, do anything that council would like to do up until this point. This, the plan, I would encourage you to take the time to review and go from there. Going forward, I believe county council should begin to allocate a portion of the general fund into the capital plan every year. Obviously, you can see that $660,000 is the last of this bond that was left over from the commissioner days. I would encourage county council to take a small portion of the budget every year in order to upkeep our capital budget. In addition, I would also recommend that any money we receive, if we receive any, from the Cole Street TIF litigation of about $1.2 million, will also go into this fund. I think that's the best way to keep this fund liquid in order to keep working on projects. With that being said, there are always projects to be done here in Luzerne County. We do have some older buildings. However, we have gone through quite a bit in our time here. You will notice that we have almost all new elevators. Our roofs have been have been completed in almost every building. The $2 million restoration project that we've all were very proud of for our Rotunda project also came out of this fund. So we have done quite a bit of projects. They are all listed in this budget from 2015. And every project that we that council has approved in previous budgets is also located in this budget. So please take the time to review it. I would think that council would have many questions on this over the next three months, and we're open for any and all suggestions.
Thank you. What we'll do is, on the, each month, we'll have, one of the work sessions, we will have an agenda item for the plan, capital plan. So we'll have the first one next, the first meeting in June, two weeks, three weeks from now. And then we'll have one in July, one in August, prior to the September 1st deadline. Okay?
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Mr. Pedri, you said that we could add projects or take projects off.
Sure.
Do you have a list of other projects? I mean, you submitted the projects that you're suggesting, but do you have a list of other projects? I mean, in the past, we usually would see a list of projects that were out there that, you know, could be done.
That's, these are the projects we need done, that I've submitted. I don't have any other ones.
Well, I understand that, but then it's, I don't see how you could say we could add projects to it.
Well, it's up to you. I mean, is there a project that you like for us to get done?
I don't know, Mr. Pedri. What other projects are there?
There are no other projects.
You have no other projects?
Other than the ones made here.
Okay. Because in the past, we would get, you know, a couple pages of different projects that were like an entire list of potential projects.
What year was that?
Well, there was a year when we had several projects that were requested at the prison, as well as other projects. I mean, I remember seeing, you know, a couple pages-long list
Correct.
of different projects.
And based upon the amount of money that we have left, I don't feel comfortable asking for any other projects.
Well, I know, but they were not projects that we allocated money for. They were, it was a list of potential projects.
No, if I recall correctly, Madam Chair, and, excuse me, Ms. Howe, it was that I, that budget was submitted. And it wasn't up, this is something you could do. That was the budget that was submitted with those projects. If I recall, county management said that each of those projects had to be submitted, but it's up to your allocation. That was a big year for the county budget to ask for a lot of those projects. I'm not in the position to do that. With the amount of money that's left, this is the amount of money we have, and these are the projects that we think need to be completed. If you feel there are other projects that you would like to add or take off, or if you like our engineers to have a study as to other projects that you think are needed in the county, I would, I will submit them to, I'll ask them to make other options for you.
Okay. Am I remembering this incorrectly? Does anybody else remember seeing a list of projects that we funded some and we didn't fund others?
I think there's a list in the back.
No, we list, well, we gave you a list of all the projects. And then county council went through and said, I like this one, I like this one, I like this one. But they were all on the budget, the same way that we did here.
No, but there wasn't enough money for them in the budget, for them all, and that was why we did that.
No, I'm not, I'm not going to submit a budget without the money.
Yep. Okay.
I think it would be a good idea if Mr. O'Neill and his staff, or whoever is involved, if they have any suggestions, and if we could have a potential estimate with each suggestion so we have an idea. If that's possible, that would be probably very helpful.
Well, I don't know where the projects. I mean, well, sure. We got lots.
We would appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just have a brief question as well.
Yes.
Ms. Pedri, you mentioned the TIF as a potential replenishing source for our capital fund. You mentioned something else as well?
I would think that, I'm going to recommend to county council that you allocate a portion of the general fund budget every single year
Okay.
in order to keep this up.
Because you're absolutely right. I mean, $600,000 downright scary, you know, going forward. And not throwing stones or anything, but can we expect to yield any rebates from projects that maybe they came in below budget, anything like that? Any sources of funding that might materialize?
Every project that is in budget is in this budget, unfortunately. We reviewed every single project to show which ones are under budget, and we've allocated those funds. And you'll see that when you review the budget.
How about energy savings contract? Can we expect to yield anything from that?
Now, that's a separate bond, though. Harry, that's a $7 million fund. That's a separate bond that we utilize for those projects. That being said, I hope that when all those projects are completed, our energy numbers will go down. Now, that's a general fund savings, though.
Yes.
Okay? So then the general fund is to pay our gas and our electric and everything along those lines. So once we have our new boilers in, and they're pretty close to being completed, UGI has been connecting that line. Once they're in, our heating costs should go down. So if council wants to take the decision, say, hey, listen, maybe we don't need $400,000 to heat the courthouse next year, maybe we can do it for 380. Okay, that's a general fund savings, though. So it's up to council whether or not you want to take that funding and put it into this, or to reap the benefits from there.
And I like keeping the general fund savings there because you can pay for staff, and we know that's the big cost here in Luzerne County, or in any organization for that matter. But if we can locate other sort, any other funding streams for the capital funds, I don't know if we can continue to keep our eyes peeled for that.
Yeah, I'm all ears.
Yeah, same. And I'm all eyes. But, no, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Pedri, on the repaving of the parking lot for the courthouse, where would, if you wanted to make a suggestion or amendment to that, for some lighting, particularly in the evenings, especially in the winter
Sure.
when people are leaving this courthouse? And women are at risk, I think, or anybody's at risk. Would that go into adding here, or is there another fund?
No, this would, it would come out of this fund if you would like. If, I would say this, if council has any project like that that you would be interested in seeing, I'll ask our engineers to do an estimate as to what needs to be done for that. So I'll ask Mr. O'Neill here to perform an estimate for lighting of the back parking lot, as to what that would be, what that would cost for your review. And then it'll be up to council if they want to approve that or not as an amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, moving down to number three. Your motion to adopt a resolution authorizing county manager to execute a software acquisition and licensing contract with Microsoft Corporation regarding a Microsoft contract. So we have a motion. Mr. Kelleher, do we have a second?
Second.
I think it was Mr. Snee this time. Under question?
I had some discussion
Mr. Urban?
Last week, I had some discussion regarding the contract, and, you know, I was told that every employee would get a full suite of software. And I don't see how it's, it's less costly for every employee to get a full suite of software versus the software that they actually need. You know, I ran an organization with about 300 people in New Jersey. I was in the military, and I went through this, and we ended up saving several hundred thousand dollars by only giving people the software that they needed and not providing them a full suite of software. Not everybody needs Excel spreadsheet. Not everybody needs everything that comes with a software package. Some people have maybe a need only for email and for Microsoft Word. That's all they have a need for. And I think that that's all they should have. They shouldn't have everything because they don't use it, so.
You raised that question
I did. I did. I did.
Mr. Mario?
Okay. What I have here is the options that we have for the government enterprise agreement. I'll hand these out, and then I'll continue when I get back to the podium. Thank you.
Thanks.
You need one more? Need more?
Camera.
Thank you.
Okay. So on the front of this printout, we have the different government license available to us. The G1 license does not include any on-premise software. It does not include copies of Word, Excel, PowerPoint, et cetera, that can be loaded on a local PC. It only includes accessing that software in the cloud, which is convenient for users who are mobile, but most of our users are, work at a desk, and it's not convenient or really feasible for them to try to use cloud-based software in the office. It's much clumsier, if you will, slower, and it's just not the kind of product you can use in a professional environment. The one we're purchasing is the government G3 license, which gives us all of the software that we can load on our PCs. It also gives us rights to use the software in the cloud for those employees who do work in the field, such as caseworkers, et cetera, so that they could access their information from their mobile devices if they're not on something that they can access in the office. The government G5, of course, is more expensive. It's not much different than the G3 that we're using. It adds in a VoIP component for teleconferencing and soft phones, which we don't need because we have the new MyTelephones that are just a few years old. So we don't need that. On the back, there's a comparison between the E1, which again includes no software for a PC, and the K1 license, which is considered a kiosk license. And there's, the K1 license is more restrictive than the E1 license, and it, of course, is even less expensive than that. We do have a number of those licenses for employees who have no need to use Microsoft Office products whatsoever, except for email. So that, the K1 license gives them access to email at a very significantly reduced cost. There's a large number of third parties that utilize these licenses with us as well that are reimbursed by 911 Center through their fund for communications with schools and municipalities that they utilize, but that is not paid for out of the general fund. They're also not showing in the sheet. There's F-series licenses, which are for front-end employees. And again, none of those include any software that can be loaded on a PC. They're all cloud-based solutions.
So you're saying that some of our users have the K1, which is significantly
Right. I want, and I should have the number here, but off the top of my head, I want to say there's about 100 of our users, give or take, that are benefiting from the K1 license for email, and they don't have a need for any other software.
And everybody else would be an E1?
And everybody else would be a G3.
G3?
Yeah. Which is equivalent to E3 in the commercial side. The G3 is on the government side.
Okay.
And sometimes those terms are used interchangeably.
And that, is that what the contract figures are based upon?
Right.
Those numbers, 100 with the K1
Correct. Yeah, I was just trying
The rest of the users?
Trying to find the document that has the exact number.
Well, I'm sure that could vary depending on which employees are in what capacity.
Right. And as the need changes throughout the contract, we can make modifications to that without having to do an actual contract addendum. We can just place an order in any of the direction. Let's take a quick look here. We have a total of 220 kiosk licenses in the contract, and close to 200 of those are being reimbursed by 911 for those third parties that they communicate with. So there's roughly between 20 and 50 actual county employees who don't need any other software besides email.
Okay. Anyone else? Any roll call, please? Thank you.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. McKinley?
Yes.
Nine and one. Motion carries. Moving down to number four. Adopt a resolution authorizing county manager to execute a contract with UGI to realize utility cost savings. We have a motion.
So moved.
Ms. Wakus? Do we have a second? Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Under question?
Yes. I've read
I've read the statements about UGI and the future lowering costs. Has that been taken into account as you're trying to fix the cost on this?
Mr. O'Neill, would you come to the podium, please? Mr. O'Neill, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the last time you were here, you had one figure, 3-point something, and I think the last time it was at 3.0?
That's correct. There have actually been three figures from the time that I started working on this.
And you expected to get another figure today, or?
We did get another figure today of 3.026.
3.026?
It's actually in between the initial figure and the last figure that we received. So it had gone up since our meeting two weeks ago.
Okay. Mr. Kelleher, that question in that regard?
My point is if there's a, could it be that we pick a fixed cost, and they end up lowering the rate, so it's lower than our fixed cost? Is that a possibility?
Well, this is a gas supply-only figure, so I'd have to check with Mr. Reno and UGI to confirm, but when they say their rates may be adjusted or in a downward direction, I'm not so sure that they're indicating that to be just the rate for supply. That rate could entail supply, transmission, and distribution. There's a couple different factors, so I'd have to clarify that information. I was not aware, and during our conversations, that had not been presented to me as an option or something in the future. What I can say is that if we were to wait and see if there were a decrease in January, it's very likely that the prices can decrease next week. There's no question about it. It's a very volatile market. But we, you know, when we, if we wait and hold off on locking in this rate, then there's just a risk factor there that we could be having to jump into a higher rate. So I can't, I can't say that come January, I don't have a crystal ball. I don't even know if UGI would be able to confirm or deny that, whether the rate would be better than what we're getting now. I can check into it. That's all I can, all I can say at this point. But I know the market's very volatile, and I'm inclined to think that if that was something in our best interest, that that may have been mentioned at the meeting, but I can't say for sure.
Mr. O'Neill, in January of this year, the rate was over 4, 4-point something. Is that, am I correct on that?
In January, the rate was about 1450 at its peak, and that's when we had that real cold weather, and obviously, the demand was at the highest point. So it was well, it was over three times the rate that we have been given through today's contract. I would be happy to look into this. My only concern is that, again, this is, this is something that, I don't want to say that it would fluctuate on a daily basis, but obviously, in the course of four weeks, it has fluctuated, has gone from 3.049, I think was the initial figure, down to 3, and then today it came in at 3.026. So it's, it's a little bit of a gamble. You know, it's a, that's a worthy note to make that there was an advertisement. I wasn't aware of that, but all I can say at this point is I can check into it, but if we postpone the vote, I can't be responsible, nor can they, if we have to wait another two weeks and the rates jump up between now and then. Mr. Chair, got a question?
Yes.
I mean, utilities are publicly regulated. Anytime the rates go up or down, they've got to be approved by the PUC in Pennsylvania. So I think that's an easy, easy thing to check into. I mean, PUC has a website. I mean, you probably can grab that information pretty quick if they need to be. So I'm inclined to put this off for two weeks and find out if, in fact, the PUC approved a rate reduction for the public and whether it will impact this or not, so.
Anyone else with a question?
Yes, my only comment would be, we could get a rate reduction, and then get another cold winter, and then wipes out all that rate reduction we're going to get, which is going to be a small rate reduction from what I've heard on the radio, so.
Well, we could potentially experience some really high variable rates. I would assume more towards the winter months approaching that January timeframe. That would be my concern, just knowing what I know about the rates and how they fluctuated over the course of the last six to eight months.
I think when you spoke to us last, Mr. O'Neill, you said there was a rather large bill in January this year?
That's correct.
And UGI, at that point, that's when you started to talk with them in this regard?
UGI had agreed to negotiate that rate. I don't, it was a pretty large figure, and it was a pretty substantial reduction in a bill that right now we're technically on the hook for, so.
But they were willing to negotiate on that bill also?
Yeah, they were willing to negotiate. If I'm not mistaken, it was about a 60% reduction on that bill.
Mr. Craig, you want to point out the contract?
Just one thing for council to also keep in mind. With this contract, it can be canceled by the county, actually by either side, at any time without cause upon giving 30 days' notice. So that's all it would take to get out the contract, is 30 days' notice. Just something to also consider.
And with that being said, if we were to be made aware, I don't see those rates dropping drastically or us getting a better rate in the next few months, let's put it that way, based on what he's told me. As a matter of fact, I talked to Jim, we, I didn't speak to him personally, but we had several emails back and forth today. I requested the current pricing for today very early this morning, and during the email correspondence we had, he said that the rate had even gone up today, and he had kind of kept the price at yesterday's rate for us to try to help us out. Now, I'm not saying it was a drastic increase, but it was on the increase throughout the day today. So again, it's a.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. O'Neill?
Mr. Chair, Mr. O'Neill, thanks for bringing our attention to this. I think it's good leadership, and this is reminiscent of that fixed payer swap fiasco where our debt was, variable rate debt was going up exponentially, and I see this along the same lines. Fixed rate's got to be better than a variable rate on our utilities. Even homeowners see this in your own personal properties. You see the rate increases and decreases during the seasons, but it seems like, I just trust our leadership that we negotiate a good rate, and again, we don't want to, still trying to correct maybe mistakes of the past, and I wholeheartedly will support this.
I would, if I could just make a comment, it's certainly something that I can look into and discuss with Jim. We've opened up a very good line of communication with them. With the information that Shannon has provided regarding the contract and our ability to opt out of it, I think that if the rates were to drop significantly as January approaches, that we would be able to get out of this contract and negotiate an updated contract to reflect that savings. But I would suggest, my recommendation would be to not delay this right now for the simple reason that we have bills from January that are pending, that are at risk here, and the amount of money that we're talking about is significantly more than what we would stand to save if we delayed, so that would just be my recommendation to council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What amount is that? How much are, how much do we, you said significantly, how much do we plan on saving? I mean, you got a number? I would, I would say it's in excess of $40,000. I don't want to say an exact figure. I don't have the exact figure. There were also a couple different bills. That was the, that was the large one. There may also be some savings on, not small bills, but some of the second and third largest accounts that we have as well. Were they all for this building? Were they all for this building? It was, it was for our boiler plant, which is the primary utilizer for gas consumption.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Ms.? Okay, at this point, we're going to break for an executive session. I need a motion to go to executive session.
So moved.
Mr. Snee, second. The segment, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I like the shoes.